Well, good evening. I guess it's 6 o'clock already. We're going to go ahead and start this workshop. I just want to acknowledge all board members that are present today. Ms. Patsy Garcia, Renee Penya, Mr. Jesse Solis, Mr. Eddie Ramirez, and of course, our board president, Dr. Barrera. Thank you for being here. And everyone else who is present today, thank you. We're going to go ahead and begin with item number three. Ms. Garcia, Ms. Becky, I'm sorry, any public comments on agenda items? Becky, do we have any? No, ma'am. Thank you. We're going to go ahead and move on to item four. Ms. Robles, Finance Reports, item A.
Good evening. Item 4A1, Tax Collection Report for the Month of May. The tax collections report for the month of May 2025 is attached for your review. The report provides collection for the current month as well as on a year-to-date basis. In May of 2025, the district had collections in MNO and INS of $160,541, $52,412 delinquent, and $60,035 for penalties and interest and other correlations were $59,132 for a grand 4A2, Budget Balances. The first report that you will see there is for the Child Nutrition Program and actual revenues through the month of May. We have received $10,698,000, expenditures of $10,818,000 for an excess right now of expenditures under revenues of $120,224. The second report is for the General Fund. Through May of 2025, we have collected $92,693,000 in revenues. We have paid $88,971,000 in expenditures. And we have received other resources from the Chapter 313 agreements that we have, $2,967,000, and we have paid out $18,000 in settlements. So we do have right now a net change in fund balance of $6.6 million. The following fund, the Debt Service Fund, through the month of May 2025, total revenues of $11,099,000, expenditures of $8,839,000 for an excess of revenues over expenditures of $2.2 million. And then the following item is the Monthly Check Register, which is provided to you as a report on a monthly basis for your review. Any questions that cannot be addressed at the meeting regarding any check will be researched, and the answer will be provided to you at the next board meeting or after the meeting. Are there any questions?
Thank you, ma'am. Any questions? Thank you. Item B, Considering Take Possible Action on Pay Application 23 from Gerlock Builders LLC, DBA Will Khan.
Attaches Pay Application Number 23 for $388,78 for the Gruia Middle School as of March of 24, 2025 payable to Gerlock Builders.
What's the progress there? What percentage of the school is done? And will it be ready? I mean, there's concerns out there at the east side. There's rumors that it won't be ready by late July. Teachers are already asking, sir, when are we moving in? And I can't respond to that question yet. So could you give us both some definite data as to when this project will be finalized?
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Dejulino Garza. I'm the architect for the Gruia Middle School. And the scheduled completion date is May 31st. However, I know there's been some delays at the party going to claim. I think a realistic date is going to be like at the end of June. I think at the very latest, and I'm hoping it doesn't get to that, it'd be mid-July. But I talked to them about exactly that today, and that was the latest that we have on how we're doing on all of that.
Marine Wood, and I'm the superintendent. Can you have a team probably go do a walkthrough at the campus and make sure that progress is being made and to get actual, you know, word, delivery date?
Yes, Mr. Penya.
People keep asking, and they keep telling me, hey, they told me it's not going to be ready until, very close till school starts. And that would be tough.
We've done some of these personal walkthroughs already, and I know that you recently did one, Mr. Lopez, and also spoke to the superintendent.
Actually, I, Ms. Madam Board President, members of the board, Ms. Garza, Superintendent, I went out there and I spoke to Fabian Ochoa today, this morning, from Fabian as a superintendent, construction superintendent. Just a quick update, they're doing the final paving on the north and west side around the gym area. So that's the final area to finish the paving. Administration, building only needs the millwork. Library only needs the millwork. The gym needs the final coating on the gym floor, and they're finalizing electrical and plumbing in one area. The sixth, seventh, and eighth grade wings are all at 100%. Band hall is at 100%. Cafeteria is at 100%. We do need a stove range in the sixth-grade hall. As of this morning, we were on it already. So that should be at the campus, hopefully here, within the next day or two to finish all the classrooms. So at this point, as of this morning, Gruia Middle School is at 98% complete. And Mr. Fabian Ochoa said that they are about a month away from it being at 100. So in the next four weeks, he feels very confident that we can start moving in by the end of June.
Yes.
And the contract states, by when did we suppose?
May 31st.
So what happens if they exceed the timeframe?
Well, the May 31st is what's written on the contract, and it has some delays already programmed into that. But I know that when I spoke with them today, they haven't claimed some delays on the water meters. And we stopped the work because of the Stark County Building Inspector. But they assured me that at the latest, they want to get out of there mid-July, but they're going to shoot for the end of June.
Just to be thorough, I would like for legal to see that contract. I would love to see what provisions are in there, whether there are guarantee clauses for delays. They have to be serious enough delays. And we were at the board meeting, asked him specifically to his face, when are you going to have this done? And they gave me a date, you promised that. It's a guarantee. And I said, okay, now we're going to come out there with you for remedies or something. We're going to have some legal cause of action. He still didn't say, no, we're going to be ready, we'll be done. And we sit here still today, not completed. It's just certain things that, I don't want to be the stickler here, but we have summer. School starts, what, early August now? They got to move in there. We need time to do that part. I don't think, you know, if they're not going to be done till late June, late July, are we going to have time to get everything settled in?
I can tell you that they are working with full crews out there. They're not like low on their workforce. There's people out there working all the time.
I was just going to ask legal, would you please review that, those delays or provisions, whatever they're called, just to see if they are within their contractual time limits? And I mean, if there's some view or envy there, we might as well be thorough with it.
Hopefully you can hear me. Mr. Ramirez, I'm speaking here to Mr. Garcia. We personally have not seen that contract. I understand that we have computers in form. Both of our teams were onboarded, but if we can review it and we can see what causes are in there related to delays and if there is a cause of action that the position might have, but we do need to put our eyes and see that contract first.
Yeah, because we're stating in June, I mean, teachers are telling me that we're not going to be ready. Teachers are telling me we're not going to be ready by July. These are teachers, not professional staff or that are in the construction business. And that's what's out there, so they're concerned about that. So, I mean, I'm hoping June 30th is the latest, not mid-July like you mentioned down, because mid-July would be cutting it very close to the start of the school year. And teachers don't need more stress than what they have right now. They've got enough on their plate. I think that if we promise them school by, way before school starts, I think it should be ready way before school starts.
And that's not to say that we could not occupy some of those buildings, you know, even right now. You know, so there's that option in case you want to take it. But I do know that the cafeteria, the fine arts, the classroom wings, they're pretty much ready to go.
Is that something that we could do? That we could have our teachers start moving into and not completely finish school?
But then you get into the, what if something happens to them?
That's why I'm asking.
The liability.
And another concern, I think last time that we went out there, Mr. Lopez, I don't know when we're going to be handed the final punch list, because I know that we walked into several of those classrooms that we say that are ready to be moved in, but there were tapes here, there were bricks missing from certain classrooms for some reason or another. So when are we going to get that final punch list?
And great point, Ms. Garza. And another thing that maybe legal here can help us with is, example, our technology department, they need to go in there and do a lot of wiring. They're not allowed to start until the construction company hands us over the keys. So if there's something we can work out where they can start, like before, and again, that's a legal question that we need some direction on. Hopefully, they can start very soon and not wait till the end of June or the first week of July to get started with what they need to do as a department.
You know, broke with me, said, how long would that take you, realistically?
Honestly, we went in there last week. We were going to start installing our security cameras, access points, network switches, and they told us that we couldn't go in until the building was turned over. We're talking about about a month to do all that. And if we can't go in till the end of July, it won't be ready to the beginning of the school year. There's no way. There's no way. Not with the size of the department and the equipment that's required to start the school. We actually need to go in there like next week.
That's my concern. I'm not trying to be, you know, pressure here or whatever, but that's my concern. And this is not the first time they've delayed and given us, you know, a couple months. This is not the first nor the second time. It's been a few times. So just at some point, you got to put your foot down and say, hey, you know, we even had goodbyes to the old, like, Gruia Middle, you know, they're expecting us to move to the new one. And now we're saying, oh, it might not happen. It's sad all the way around, unless they can really come through and get it done by, like Mr. Penya said.
Then they also said, oh, insurance. It covers for a few months.
That is correct. And one of the board meetings, we extended the insurance.
It costs thousands of dollars.
I'm not sure till what month that covered. Yeah, we'd have to check, did July?
The end of July.
So let's hope that, well, let's see.
They won't be done by July 11.
Yes. Well, because that's at May 31st, we gave them even another two months, a month and a half.
They said that to cover us.
Correct. Correct.
Okay. Noted.
You have to be there every day, Mr. Lopez. You be there every day, please.
So, thank you, sir. So are there no more questions? We will add this item to consent agenda. Item C, Considering Take Possible Action. Our proposal from Texas Association of School Business Officials, TASO, to review the RGC GISD Business Office Policies and Procedures.
The RGC GISD Business Office is seeking a renewed focus on the development and implementation of best financial practices across the district. As part of this effort, we're evaluating current procedures and seeking expert guidance to ensure long-term fiscal sustainability and transparency. Our primary goal is to enhance the district's financial decision-making capabilities, improving financial transparency, and ensure compliance without applicable regulations. We're seeking financial guidance, training, and ongoing support. The Texas Association of Business Officials submitted a proposal for a review of the policies and procedures followed by the district's business office. The objectives are, one, to assess the procedures and processes of the district's business operations, including accounting, finance, purchasing, and payroll. Two, provide recommendations for changes in staffing and/or changes in organizational structure to maintain an efficient and effective organization. And three, to provide recommendations for improvement in current practices, workflow, processing, and internal controls. TASO will charge a fee of $11,000 for the evaluation of the finance procedures and operations. Should the district desire to review the HR function in conjunction with a review or at a later date, TASO will provide that review at an hourly rate of $250 per hour plus travel. Administration recommends the approval of this proposal.
Ms. Diana, and this is done every, what, when was the last time that we did this?
No, this is, we're seeking guidance from...
We've never done this?
No.
Wow, okay. And this, she was clarifying that 250 would be if additional for human resources. We also want them to look into that. Okay. Well, I think it's something important that we should be...
So basically, they're just coming to evaluate our system, what we have in place, and to give recommendations as to what we can improve in?
Right.
And who are these people? Are these people that are experts in the field?
Yes. So TASO, this is the organization that most of the school districts attend the conference to. And so all of these professionals are experts. They have been working at other school districts, and whenever they're ready to move on, they seek employment at TASO. And so they're very experienced.
I think seeing all the past issues we've been having, not you, not Mr. Kizada, but we've been seeing with the past boards, the way things have been run, I think it'd be irresponsible from this board not to look over this and approve this.
Okay. There are no other questions? We'll go ahead and move this into consent agenda. Item D, Considering Take Possible Action on Employee Voluntary Benefits with Salazar Insurance Group LLC.
Well, we do have Salazar Insurance Group here to make a brief presentation on the changes that are coming up this...
Thank you.
My name is Dion Chavez. I'm the Sales Manager for Salazar Insurance Group. We are your current broker of record. With that being said, there is the matter of the voluntary benefits we have with Mutual of Omaha. They've had three years that they've been with the district, and in the three years, they have good rates, but there has been a rate increase because of what we call a renewal. Part of what we do as an agency on behalf of the district is we go and we shop, we try to find the best rates for the employees of the district. That being said, because there has been a lot of claims that have been processed through the district, it makes it very difficult to keep the rates the same. Now, with that, we have talked to Mutual of Omaha, and there has been a concession. You'll find in your packet a legal-size paper in which we are showing you that with respect to the rates for the dental, Mutual of Omaha is saying that they cannot keep the rates the same. They're willing to give a one-year rate for an increase of 6%. Or they'll lock it in for two years, but it'll increase by 8%. I will go ahead and mention that what we are looking to do is bundle this with another carrier, Unum Enterprise. They are a company that is global in what they provide through disability. They're the largest disability distributor in the world, and they're the most financially solvent company as well. Unum has been in the district before, and the district has liked them very much. So we're looking to try to work with them. And with that, on the dental offer, they're willing to give a 10% decrease from where the current rates are with Mutual. So you're actually going to see a savings come to the district. With respect to the vision, Ameritas is the current carrier. Ameritas has told us that they cannot hold the rates the same. What they would like to do is increase it by 23%. But again, we're working with Unum, and Unum has said that they're willing to go down 3% from where the current rates are with Ameritas. So again, you will see another savings. Moving along with the other lines of coverage, specifically the disability, there are two categories. There's short-term disability, and then there's long-term disability. The short-term covers for a period of six months. If someone's out beyond six months, and the long-term continues to cover them to the age of 65 or the age of retirement. So what we're looking at is a rate pass. With respect to Mutual, they will go ahead and give a rate pass for up to two years. But Mutual, rather, Unum is willing to keep the rates the same for three years. On the long-term disability, the rate would stay the same with Mutual. However, with Unum, they're willing to give a 16% discount across the board on that for the three years. Now, moving on to the life insurance, the district has, I think it's $10,000 of life insurance for every active employee, and those rates, they're looking to want to increase them with Mutual, but we discourage them from doing it. So they said they'll keep them the same for two years. Unum says they'll do that for three years. Moving along, there's also the hospital indemnity. With that, Mutual has said they'll keep the rates the same. And with regard to Unum, they will basically on the low plan give a 20% savings, but on the high plan, they'll give a 15% savings. So with all that being said, what we are recommending is that everything be bundled with Unum and that the district benefit from those savings. Now, one thing I do want to stress, and I'm going to go ahead and make a point to just emphasize this right now, the offer that's on the table from Unum is for one year. However, there's an option that if the district elects to keep them for an additional two years, they'll just keep the rates the same. Now, the reason that's very important to understand is because, let's assume that claims just keep climbing and climbing and climbing. And let's just say that the company's losing money. Their commitment is regardless, if they're losing money, the rates will not go up. They're locked in. That is their promise and their commitment to the district. But at this point, it is a one-year offer with the option to renew for up to two more years. So that's three years locked in. I'm not sure if there would be any more questions, but one last thing I will mention is that these products will be mirrored. So what we have currently in place with Mutual will be exactly what you will have with Unum, but with savings. Any questions?
Just to clarify, the one year and then the option to renew, which is important because we need to make sure that if something better became available, that we would have that available for our staff. And I think that you said it well. It's not a three-year contract. It's a one-year, and then we have the option to renew for an additional two.
Yes, you're correct. That is correct. A one-year contract with the option to renew for two years. And at this point, when we reached out to other carriers to ask if they would be willing to submit a proposal, MetLife, Lincoln Financial Group, you know, these are big names, they were reluctant. And the reason is because the claims are so high. So I will say this as well, that Colonial is in the district right now, and Unum is the parent company to Colonial. So you'd actually have a streamlining of all products on one platform.
And even if we renew for those two years, we have the option to opt out, correct?
That's correct. It's at will. You can opt out. Yes, ma'am.
Do you all have, like, a breakdown of what staff we have that could be out of our TRIs and like going into Medicare? Do you all have that? Like, how bad does that affect us? Because it would be something good for the staff to transfer over to Medicare, right, Patsy? We had discussed that. Do you all have, like, numbers for us to see?
We do have data with respect to the voluntary. That's a separate issue altogether.
Oh, we're talking about, yes, okay. But that's something that I have that I've been wanting to...
But we do have the data that we have analyzed, and we do have some options and things we'd like to propose, but that might be on a different workshop.
Yes. That's something that I think is important for us to look into and see if that's affecting also our claims. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? All right, the item will be moved into consent agenda. Thank you, sir.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. Item E, Considering Take Possible Action on Budget Amendment Number 2025-8.
This budget amendment 2025-8, the amendment is prepared to revise the current budget. Revisions to expenditures under revenues are presented for your review and approval. Basically, this is the final budget amendment that we'll be presenting for the year. This doesn't mean that we will be spending these funds that we're requesting. We just want to make sure that we will not be overdrawn in any of the functions, because by law, we need to be under.
And this budget amendments, Diana, will guarantee that we will have enough to cover for what's left of the pending or outstanding expenditures that we have?
Right.
Any other questions? Okay, we'll move this item into consent agenda as well. Item F, Considering Take Possible Action on Designation of Fund Balance as of June 30th, 2025.
Under Texas law, specifically Texas Education Code 44.151, school districts that receive settlements for construction defects must use the proceeds to repair the affected facilities. Consequently, the district will report $4,89,711 as designated fund balance for the repairs of Rio Grande City High School as of June 30th, 2025. The only activity that we have this year was interest earned in the amount of $101,849.
If there are no questions, we will move this item to consent agenda.
Maybe this is a question for legal, but I know, like, the amount of settlements, you'd have to use it to repair certain schools. But does that include the interest earned from that money? Would you know? Because 101, did you put it together with, like, all of it together as a full amount? But you don't know for a fact that that interest, the 101, does that have to be used? I know the settlement amount.
I do not know for a fact, but I would be afraid to spend it.
I'm just curious, because maybe we've used that amount for something else.
Okay, no further questions? We'll move this into consent agenda. Item G, Considering Take Possible Action on Bid Agreements Up For Renewal. RFP 25-08, Third Party Administrator for Workers' Compensation Claims. RF 25-09, Fire Extinguisher Services and Supplies Districtwide. RFP 25-13, Fresh Produce for Child Nutrition Program. Go ahead, Mr. Lopez.
So we're just, good evening. We're just bringing these items to see if you want us to extend or to go ahead and put them out for bids again for the new coming school year.
Yes, those items will be out for bid.
All three?
Can you get that a little bit closer, Ms. Garza? I did not hear you. The mic.
Yes, all three.
Okay.
I will say for workers' compensation claim, I think Cedric's done a pretty good job. It's going to be hard to find anybody better. They've done pretty good with our workers' claims. I know they always have a surplus, but yeah, going out for bids doesn't hurt.
The worst that can happen is we get the same.
Yeah. And there's only those three that we have open for now, yes. Coming up. And that would be the Fire Extinguisher Services, Food, Fresh Produce for Child Nutrition Program, and Third Party Administrator for Workers' Compensation Claim.
Correct.
Yes.
Okay. So we'll go ahead and bid them up.
No other questions? We'll go ahead and put this item in consent agenda. Moving on to item H, Considering Take Possible Action on Requisitions Under TASB Policy CH Local Purchasing and Acquisition. Those are there for their... Those are there for their review. If you have any questions, please let us know.
So these are just invoices that were submitted late or whatever. For some reason, weren't submitted properly.
We did not have a PO for these requisitions.
Well, the good thing, I notice, the amounts are not high, so that's a good thing.
There is one in particular, you are looking at it. It came back October, and that requisition was just submitted. That is a reason that we are just paying out.
So old, again, like we are getting bills from October of last year, which is something I think is unacceptable as a board. Our directors, we should, or the superintendent should be asking our directors to make sure that they do, you know, things in a timely manner. And I think this is unacceptable. It's, we've been how many months still paying old bills? I think we had the 3Gs, the HVACs, the Borregas. We had $200,000 from the La Union Water Supply. It's really, I just want to point out that that's wrong, that we need to pay our bills on time. And if we can't do that, then I think it's showing a lack of responsibility, a lack of transparency. And I really, really hope that that gets fixed. We don't want to be seeing, or I don't want to leave this, you know, four years and then leave our bills for the next board to be paying. I think that's very irresponsible. So I think we need to make sure that we're a little more strict with these things and make sure that those, that we don't let this kind of fall and not get paid on time.
Mrs. Robles made one, just about one good point. One of them says, doesn't even show a receipt or invoice, it says estimate. I'm not sure.
The one for $1,005.40.
Right, I don't even know what, I don't even know what that...
Item, state approved director or other, it says estimate.
Right. Estimate.
That is what they included with the requisition, but we know the work has been done.
Okay.
Or was this work done? There was a troqueguerra?
Correct.
The chiller.
This comes down to accountability and like responsibility. We just give, you know, allow people, it's like our own kids. If you let your kids, you know, have open, an open account with, you know, different vendors and places, I don't think we're being responsible with that. I think that there needs to be more accountability, and we need to make sure that we're doing things the right way and that they're following procedures.
My question is, why hadn't this come before? Have we had other, other receipts come in prior that were even older than these? How come this is just placed today on this?
They, they just plugged it in in May, so when we see it is when we bring it to you.
That's October, and you just, they just submitted in May?
They barely plugged it in in May. So since we couldn't bring it in in the last board meeting, we brought it this morning.
So can we make a new policy saying that they only have, you know, within three months of two invoices and bills for the services?
Yes. Ms. Garza, the superintendent can delegate to the finance department that any orders or anything need to be submitted within 30 days, 45 days. But she can take your feedback, and Ms. Diana can also take your feedback and implement that to the employees in the finance department, a timeline when things need to be submitted.
If I'm correct, I believe that legal had advised us to work on this policy to where this would not be happening.
Yes.
That we were going to look at policy, can not, Diana? I believe that's what it then had stated.
Yes, one of our other attorneys, Eric, has been working closely with Ms. Diana, and that is something that we already recommended, to not be waiting to turn in receipts and purchase orders and such, that they needed to be done in a timely fashion.
But I think, right now, as policy holds, I think that it doesn't hold water, because it's like I say, a service is rendered, service is paid.
Right.
So if we can get this into place in policy to where it doesn't matter what happens, they don't comply with the, with these new policies we're putting in place, then there's something that we can do about it. We can work on that policy as soon as possible.
We sure will. Ms. Robles, do we not have something already in place that we have our vendors sign that if they do not have a purchase order, they are not to do any services?
Yes, so letters were sent out to vendors recently, letting them know that they should not be taking any orders if a PO is not presented to them. And also, any new vendors that come in, as they're filling out the forms that are required, they are also signing off on a memorandum where they're being advised that of the same thing, that they should not be receiving or working on any orders if they do not have a PO in place.
Well, has this been said to our directors too, Diana? That they're aware that they should not be requesting any services without the proper challenge?
Yes, we, in every meeting that we hold, we let them know.
And I'm assuming this is what TASB is going to come do, because I don't know if it's, y'all getting it, some person submitting it, the vendors, everyone seems to, is going to be pointing, you know?
Yes.
So I think we're just, regardless of blame, I think we're just going to address it and get it fixed.
And sometimes we do have emergencies, but there's no excuse. A bill all the way from October, the emergency could simply be put as a requisition the following day. So we will work on that. No other questions? This will go into consent agenda. Item I, considering take possible action on requisitions 5,000 and over. These were done correctly. You do have, oh, we also have an addendum as well, correct? Okay. Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Grisanto, for the, the last one, do we still have time to do those? Since it's a grant, do we still have time to do those? I think it's, what is it, fences?
Yes.
We still have time?
Yes.
It's just because you had already discussed the other two with Ms. Garza, but I think that it's important that we stand firm with telling you that these things need to be given to us in advance. And then, because we didn't discuss this, we didn't look over this, and so to add it into consent agenda, we don't feel comfortable doing it now.
We, yeah, we can remove it, and that way I just include the two items that were purely discussed with Ms. Garza.
Yes, sir. I will give you time to review, and let me know that you have any questions.
I saw something with the film, the, for the windows. I know that originally we had said that it needed to be two-sided, and then they told us that it only needed to be one-sided. What was the final outcome on that? Do we know?
It, they said it did not have to be double.
So what we're proposing right now, and we're going to be accepting, is that they do the inside tour, or what is it, Grisanto?
But I believe that's a different, a separate item, if I'm not mistaken.
Oh, separate. Is it? I think I saw it here.
That's K. Well, wait.
I think it's same.
I was looking for it, though.
I think it's a separate.
It's a separate item.
It's the same, the start center, but it's, that's the film, this is fences.
Yeah.
The item K, so I know it's a little bit of later on.
I thought I had figured this one. If I was wrong.
Honestly, with the film, Patty and I went to that TASB conference, and we had this person talking about the films, and he was saying that their film was, I don't know how much thicker than the ones that we're, we have been seeing. And I think if you speak to different people, they all have something different to say. So it's kind of, it worries me that we're not making the best decision, because we don't know really what the, what we need and what the cheapest, but the best way to go about it. But that's just me, I'm really confused still with the films, because everybody, every vendor tells you something different.
And, yeah, and everybody will tell you something different, I mean...
That the other, you know, the, this type is not right, and then this type is the best, and so it's just very confusing.
And that a certain brand is better than another, and...
But you do have the minimum requirement based on DEA regulations or...
They at least meet, yes, the minimum.
So we, okay, so we discuss that in executive? In the morning? Do we have any other questions on that item? Okay, now we're going to consent agenda. Let's move on to item J, considering take possible action on awarding of the following bids, RFP number 25-35, commercial combi ovens for Rio Grande City High School cafeteria, child nutrition program. RFQ number 25-37, on-call engineering services, architect services and materials testing. RFQ number 25-38, external auditor. Do, did we have a presentation? We do. Okay. Do I just continue down and then we'll bring them to present? Okay. Bid number 25-39, welding supplies and equipment catalog bid. RFP number 25-41, student accident insurance. CSP number 25-42, solid waste services district-wide. Bid number 26-01, office and instructional supplies catalog bid. Bid number 26-02, office furniture catalog bid. Bid number 26-03, classroom furniture catalog bid. Bid number 26-04, computer and copy paper. I'll give you some time to look at those, and if you have any questions, feel free to ask before we do bring the presentation from one of the external auditors.
On the student accident insurance, I know you have the student insurance plan, but before, it was somebody, we had somebody else, right?
Yes, correct.
Who did we have before?
It was, go to that one.
So I want to, I want to see if Doc McGuire was here, because I know he had a lot to say about the, the coverage last time, so I want to make sure he had a chance to look at this.
So the one we used to have before was Texas Insurance Service Center?
Right. They didn't bid this, this time around?
They did.
Oh, they did?
It was just they came in higher.
Okay. Oh, yes, I'm sorry. There you go, okay.
Who does the ranking? Who does the ranking of the points for the choosing?
For the bids.
For the bids?
I'm the one that puts it together.
Just one person, you?
Yeah. But who, you yourself award the points, the point system, or do you have a committee that works on that too?
No, I've been doing it, Ms. of, yes.
And how do you award the points, Mr. Guerra? I think that's what...
Based off of, it has there, if we go, let's say, to, we can go to the combi ovens, to the first one. So it has a point system on the side. So based off of pricing, references, the quality of work, maybe they meet overall objectives, things like that, so they're all listed here, and they have the point system. So of course, let's say like the pricing example, the one that came in, the highest would have the least amount of points, the one that came in the lowest would have the least amount of points.
But there's a criteria to follow.
Correct, yes.
Okay.
And of course, those are the ones that we're awarding based off of price. So we're awarding individual, not individual, but vendors as a whole, like the 2601, which is for office and instructional supplies, we're just awarding everybody so that they're vetted, so we can, yes, we can buy from anyone.
Get the best price.
Do we have any other questions? Go ahead, take your time.
For, and can I go on to RFP 2535 or no? Or do we have to follow?
No, you can.
On J?
Yes.
Okay, on the commercial combi ovens for Rio Grande City High School, it seems like Rio Grande City High School was just built not too long ago, and we're already ordering new ovens for them. I feel bad, because Guriah Middle School has no ovens over there to cook their meals, and I think it's big enough to, to, to support a full kitchen there at Guriah Middle School. Just my comment. And I've heard it from cafeteria ladies, I've heard it from, from the community, where aren't they cooking their meals at their own campus? That's just something that, something to think about.
That's, that's a great question, Mr. Pena, and I think with the new administration, I think for next school year, that is something that we're going to highly consider. It is ready for a functioning, fully kit, full kitchen, so that is something that, in hopes, you know, we will be looking at first thing.
I had a question for the engineering services. Did we have any, is there any fee for them being on standby, or what is it called?
Contingent, on-call.
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 So for this one, it is just a request for qualifications. We do not ask for pricing.
Okay. So my question was, if we approve these, we could still open it up for others?
What do you mean by that?
Like, if we want to use another engineering company later on, if these, let's say we were to have a project and we're not satisfied with the prices these are giving us, we would still be able to award it or open it up for somebody else, or we would have to stick with these? You would have to open everything up again?
If we're not satisfied with the qualifications, and then if we are not able to negotiate a, a price, then yes.
Okay. So it's not like this, and this is it? That was my question.
There is no agreement signed.
Okay.
Here's where the security window film is at, on K.
Yeah, we'll get there. And just a reminder, board, if there is any item or any bid number here that you do not wish to approve and move into consent agenda, we can always take it up.
So what do you all think about K? We're going to leave it there? It's already, we left a different...
We're not there yet, no?
No.
Ah, we're starting J, okay.
We're on the bids and the RFQ.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
I mean, one little concern that I have, Chris, and I don't know if there's too many bids and too many RFQs coming at one time, to be able to analyze each one and see them, I think that it's too little time, because I'm looking over them and trying to figure out like, to see which ones, we'd have questions on, you know, and I don't know, do they all come in at the same time, and you have to bring them in at the same time? Or can you break them into smaller groups at each meeting to where we can actually review them, have discussion on it? And it's very hard to, to discuss so many items at once, or we have any questions at once.
Could we put them out of consent and then discuss, have time to discuss them before the board meeting? And at that time, Adam, I know we were trying to stay away from adding these things then, but it would give us a little bit of time.
Absolutely, Madam President. You do not have to approve this. If there's still questions, if finance needs to go back and work on something, it does not need to be in consent, and we can put it as an action, action item at the next board meeting. It does not have to be approved today.
All right, do you guys want to do that? We pull them out of consent?
And I'm not saying, I'm saying in the future. I mean, right now, it, it looks pretty deep to, to, to look at, but in the future, we can break them down into, for one, for one outing, at one meeting.
And, yeah, and the one thing I just wanted to mention was, when we got the new legal counsel to come on board, they mentioned to us to start doing the bids, the 90 days, so they kind of piled up to, you know, to start them for the fiscal year.
I didn't want to say that, but it's legal. I mean, yeah, no, no. And all of them come up around the same time? Like, these?
So some, some of them, we pushed them so that way they could start at the beginning of the fiscal year, for seven, one.
That's why they bring the other three because he wanted, they wanted the board one in.
Yeah, and that's why we bring that, that item now for the bids. If we want to extend them or if we want to put them up for bids again, to put them up.
Okay, Liz Antoyi, who signs for the insurance renewals? Who signs the applications?
The superintendent signs the applications once we.
All right, Chris, I noticed that you have recommendations for all of them except the external auditor. Is that what, because we're going to hear the presentations today? Or do you, does the administration not have recommendation on? On the external auditor, there's two, two proposals, right? Or two people, they did. There's no recommendation?
I'm sorry, I was not.
On the, on the external auditor?
An external auditor.
I know that there's two. But even, even on the RFQs, there were, there were recommendations.
We have two or three.
No, for you, for your selection.
Okay, on that one. On the other ones, there are recommendations. Okay, we hear the presentation today. We're good.
So I say we pull them out and we discuss further and then we can put them into the board.
Um, as per discussion with Dr. Barrera, we're going to go ahead and pull item J out and we will put it as an action item in our next board meeting.
If I, if I may, Madam President, uh, I'm not comfortable discussing item K out in the open. Uh, it's a safety issue, so, uh, it's a safety measure and I don't think we should be discussing out in open.
Once I read it.
Okay.
Uh, can, do y'all still want the presentation from the external auditor?
Oh, yes, of course.
Okay, because we do have them here. Okay? Uh, we will have the presentation for RFQ number 25-38 at this time.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the board, superintendent. My name is Luis Lopez. I'm a partner with Burton McCumber in Longoria. Uh, I'm based in the McCannan office. Uh, just a little bit about myself. Uh, I have 15 years' experience, uh, in audit, auditing governments. My sole, uh, expertise is in auditing governments. Cities, school districts, counties. Uh, I live in the governmental world, uh, government accounting, compliance, federal and state grants. Uh, that's where all my experience lies. Uh, I am a certified public accountant, a certified fraud examiner as well. Uh, and with, here with me today is one of my partners as well.
Good evening, uh, my name is Lisandro Garcia. I'm one of the partners also with Burton McCumber. I'm out of the Brownsville office. Uh, just want to make sure I came out here to present to you all, put a face to the names and, uh, also just, uh, introduce our firm to you all. I'm also, I've been 20 plus years with the firm. Started as an intern, product of, of my local community. Uh, and so just stuck around with them and have been focused strictly on audits, which is something that is very, uh, very specific about our firm is we try to be, uh, we, we specialize in, in the fields that we work on, which in this case is audits.
Okay, so we were given, uh, we were told to keep it around five minutes. So it, it will be a short presentation. Uh, so we'll keep it at, we'll just talk about, give you a sh- short overview of who we are, uh, what you can expect from us and just an overview of some of the clients that we serve. Uh, we are the Valley's largest locally owned accounting firm. Uh, in fact, for the past two years, we've been recognized as one of the top 500 firms in the country. Uh, we've been in business for, for 45 years. Actually, this is our 45th year. Uh, and we've been able to do that by our commitment to providing quality audit services. Uh, and we have had an excellent history in peer review. Uh, so you may wonder, does anybody audit the auditors, right? So yes, there is a process where every three years, uh, an external firm comes, reviews our work to make sure that we, that we are in compliance, uh, following all the, the auditing standards. Uh, and our peer review is included in your packet. We do have 23 experienced audit professionals. And when I say audit professionals, I mean audit professionals. Our, our audit staff, uh, work on audits and only audits. Uh, we don't send them out to do tax returns, bookkeeping. Our auditors audit 100% of their experience is in auditing. 100% of their training is in auditing as well. In fact, we, we just attended the virtual conference for the 2025 Texas Society of CPA's, uh, School District Accounting and Auditing Conference that was held yesterday and, and today. Uh, we are a member of the AICPA Government Auditing Quality Center. Uh, this is an organization that again is committed to maintaining uh, audit quality in, in governmental audits. And we are a member of the HLB Global Network. Uh, what this is, is a, a network of firms, right? And, uh, so we, we are global in reach and local in touch, right? We're, we're here, we're based in the Valley, but we do have these resources from our, our network firms as well. Uh, we bounce ideas off each other. Sometimes they reach out to us. We reach out to them, uh, when unusual circumstan- circumstances arise. And so, uh, in selecting us, you do get those resources as well. So what can you expect from us? Uh, as I mentioned, an experience and highly trained, uh, team of audit professionals. Again, our auditors audit and do nothing else than audit. Uh, accessibility at all levels from, from partners, uh, all the, all the way down to staff. You're not going to see me here as partner today and then not hear from me until we're presenting the audit report, right? And so, uh, our focus is also on delivering your report timely. In school districts particularly, right? You want to make sure that you get your audit out on time. It's one of those where if it's a day late, you actually get an F in, in your rating, right? So it's very important that you get your audit out on time. And how, you may be wondering, well, how, how, how do you do that? Well, we have systems in place, uh, one being a system that we call Sharelink, which is our audit request list. With that, you'll, you'll see the wheel there at the bottom. It keeps track of each individual audit request, whether it's still outstanding, whether it's been fulfilled. Maybe we have additional questions, we've returned it, or we've accepted it, right? And so that gets updated in real time. So at any time, uh, your finance team or the superintendent even, if she wishes to have access to that, you can log in, uh, and view exactly where, where we're at on the audit. Uh, one thing that we have implemented that we are doing different is we, we hold a standing weekly meeting with, with the team, right? And so we'll pick a day and a time, say for example, Wednesday's at 10:00 AM. Uh, we'll, we'll set a Zoom meeting for the duration of the audit time. And every week, we, we have check-in calls to make sure that everyone is on the same page, to make sure that we're addressing issues as they come up, uh, and we're not falling behind in that process. We do have, uh, multiple levels of quality reviews. All our work is reviewed here internally and locally. Uh, so all the decisions are made here. If any issues arise, we're, we're not too far where we can come by and, and meet. And so we, we're, this is a list of some of the clients that we serve. Uh, you'll notice we don't have 30 school districts listed on there, right? And so that, that's on purpose. I mentioned how important it is to, to submit your audit on time. And so just as you are selective in choosing an auditor, we too are selective with the, the clients that we want to work with. So we don't just submit proposals to, to, to any school districts and recognizing the fact that the school districts have the same deadlines, right? So we don't want to overburden, uh, take on more than, than we can chew, right? And so these are some of the clients that we serve. Uh, McCannan ISD, Sherland, Region One at, uh, ESE, South Texas ISD and Brownsville ISD. Uh, we audit three of the four counties, uh, here in the valley, including Idaloo County, which is the, the eighth largest county, uh, in the state. Uh, and, and a couple, uh, cities and other special purpose governments. I don't know if I kept it at five minutes, but I kept it as short as I could. But thank you all for the opportunity. Anytime that, um, that we get asked to present, we, we take that opportunity. Uh, it, sometimes it's hard to look at proposals, right? And compare two proposals is a little bit different, but we appreciate the fact to, we appreciate the opportunity to allow us to be here and, and present to you all.
Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna do K, I think. Well, but if I'm being honest, K, L, even L, is also maybe considered a safety measure. So I would take both of them. Okay, nail.
We're going to go ahead and move on to item K. Consider and take possible action, our RFP number 25-26. Security window film at all elementary schools and the Start Center Phase Three Renewal Extension. It, uh, we will move this item, it being a safety topic into executive session. Item L, consider and take possible action on construction contract agreement for CSP number 24-58. Exterior doors face number two. That is also a request for us to go ahead and move that into executive session. Moving to item M. Consider and take possible action on contract agreement for CSP dot number 25-34. Solid waste services for child nutrition program.
There's only one bid for that one, right?
Correct.
Yes, and it was already board approved, there's just a contract. It's coming before you.
That's right.
Any questions? Okay, this item will be moved to consent agenda. Moving on to number five, business operations facilities. Item A. Consider and take possible action on request for use of school facilities from Real Grande City Parks and Recreation Program for their 2025 basketball season and track and field program. It will be at various school facilities. You do have there for your review what campuses, and I know some of those are pending times and days as well. If we do not have any questions, we will move that item into consent agenda. Item B, 5B, I'm sorry. Consider and take possible action on request for use of school facilities from Texas A&amp;M Agri Live Star County Extension Office to host the Star County 4H Awards Banquet on August 6, 2025 here at the multipurpose center. Okay, if there are no questions, it will be moved to cons- to consent agenda. Moving on to item number six, Office of Human Resources, 6A. Consider and take possible, we're missing a word there. Action on amending the 25, 26 compensation plan.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the board, superintendent schools, Ms. Garza. Uh, tonight, uh, we respectfully ask, so we submit some amendments to the compensation plan. Compensation plan obviously being in the mid 80. Obviously, we want to decrease that, which is personnel for our budget, which will be presented by Ms. Robles to the school board in, at the June meeting. Uh, this plan was, was presented to the board and approved in the May meeting. However, there's some amendments I'd like to present to the board today. And as you see on the next, on your pass out, there's four reasons today we're coming to the board. Number one is the board has allocated FTEs or full-time employees to, for our budget. That's been approved. And some positions were not, after combing through our, our accounting and our FTEs numbers, some positions were not accounted for. So we'd like to add those today. That's reason number one. Number two, some FTEs have been closed. Uh, number three, FTEs have been hired on an annual base salary above the midpoint for our previous FTE salary. So when we hire an employee, there's two things that can happen. If a position is new, the budget that we allocated from the board is a midpoint of that respective pay grade. Or you repre- you replace an employee who's either retired or has left the position and the position's been vacant. Whatever that salary is, that is the budget that we have to work with. So those are the two options that we have. And I'll explain that in a minute. And number four is we have some positions. The district. So with that being kept in mind on the, on your, on your handout, you see the first group of positions that were not on the compensation plan that we'd like to include. And as you can see, we have counselors at the elementary school. The first compensation plan included 10 FTEs. We'd like to increase that to 12. And, and we did notify the board that that's, that was our plan. Uh, and I want to make it real clear, just because we allot, if allotted next Tuesday, doesn't mean we're looking to use them. But we'd like to have them because there is an initiative by the superintendent and her staff to bring more counseling to some elementaries that are, are, are larger in, in numbers. As you see, the next, the next amendment we're looking for is we're going from one counselor at the alternative center to two FTEs. Uh, assistant principal at the middle school. Again, this is something that we're asking the board for if we need it. If not, we will not use it. But it is something that we've looked at, that we, uh, pinpointed. And as you can see, it keeps going with the counselor at the middle school, dean of instruction at the middle school. We have a licensed professional counselor at the special services department. Uh, CNP operations is obviously through Nutrition 101, a clerk and bookkeeping. And we have elementary music stipends. There's an initiative that we are sending, uh, additional help to the elementary schools for music. We'd like to issue them a $2,000 stipend. We did close one of the fine arts, uh, stipends at $10,000. So actually, we're saving $2,000 by doing this initiative. On the next page, you have a conjunto teacher. We're asking to advertise for a conjunto teacher, alforicodico teacher, and two instructional aides, one at the middle school and one at the Start Center. Those positions, we're happy to say are 100% direct impact at the campus. And two positions, one obviously is the child nutrition, which is, is already vacant. It's already, uh, filled with an FTE, but we left it out of the last compensation plan. And the other one is a grant funded LPC. So we're happy to say that 100%, 100% of those positions are directly impacted at the campus for campus assistance. Any questions on that? And I'll explain the total, uh, I know the bottom line is what matters, so I'll explain in a minute. Um, on the next section, you see new hires. These are employees who filled positions that were open. Uh, and again, there's two, two possibilities. Number one, we ask the board for a midpoint of that respective pay grade. Or we have a vacated position that the previous employee had a salary. That's the amount that we have to work with. So those are the two options we have. And these three positions, we went past the midpoint by those totals on your handout. And at this point, we're asking the board to allow us to have this budget so we can continue with these positions. And I'll explain something very important in a minute in the last, in the last, uh, pass out for you. And then at the bottom, you have the no change in budget positions that we'd like to reclassify. For example, in the previous compensation plan, I did specify it was a director for student information systems. To be transparent, it was a director for data quality. We did check with legal, it was fine because the, the funds were allocated, so we continued with the position. Um, and those positions are just being reallocated, not charged to the district at all. Okay? If you see the total amount that we would be asking for today, as you can see, is 726,886. However, on the last page, there's a simple Excel provided to the board. These positions are vacant and budgeted for, but we'd like to close them. And you see a total savings of 559,100, okay? So if you take, some of these people moved on to other positions, we do not want to fill these positions. Okay, so we, they are vacant, they are budgeted for, but we'd like to close them. So if you subtract that number from the number that we're requesting for the board, the total amount that we're requesting is 167,786 for all this additional help to most of, most of it being our campuses.
And I have to clarify, Mr.
Yes, ma'am.
Doc Salinas. These are your recommendations, Ms. Garza's recommendations. This is what you all think is best for our district.
Yes, ma'am, that's correct.
This is not Veronica calling you and telling you, open a position for my buddy, close a position because I don't like that guy. That's the way it is, right? It, we should not be getting these calls. Um, I have to clarify because people are texting me, calling me, messaging me and different family members that they closed their position or that they're moving them somewhere. And, and people need to understand, this is, and what I tell everybody is Ms. Garza is, you know, making the choices and the changes she needs to do. And I trust that she's doing it with the best interest of the district, our staff, our students, and that if she's making those decisions, it's because it's the best thing for the district. You know, um, and we need to, I need to clarify it. I kind of want to like put it out there like on a billboard, uh, for people to see. This is not me. This is not Mr. Peña. This is not Patty. But it kind of goes more to me. Like if it's me doing this, I'm not doing this to anybody. My consciousness is clear, gracias a Dios. This is what Ms. Garza is recommending. Um, I know people think because the past has been done certain ways, that it continues to be done that way. It is not, I'm telling everybody, it is not that way. Um, I'm leaving Ms. Garza with full authority, 100% and you and her staff to decide what gets done and who gets what because you all, her. She's the one that's going to be dealing with these people. She's going to be the one that's going to be held accountable at the end. She's going to be the one that's going to be held accountable at the end of the year, and we're going to judge her on the decisions she makes and the people that she's surrounded by, and the positions, and the directors, and the principals, and every single staff. She's going to be the one that's going to be held accountable for it. So I have given her, the board has given her full authority to make the decisions that she has to, and I have to clarify because it is not, I don't, this is not, I cannot come, no one's going to come to my business and tell me, Veronica, hire this person, fire this person. I wouldn't do it. I'm the one working with that person. I decide who works well and who doesn't, and who's good at what they do. And I wouldn't expect her to do that if I wouldn't do it myself. And so I just want to make sure that that message goes out. A lot of people don't see workshops, but if they do, people spread the word, like please respect Ms. Garza's decisions, have faith that this is going to be a good thing, that it's a tough process, but that eventually it's going to be for the best interest of the district.
Thank you.
Could I just add a little bit to that? I want to say, first of all, thank you, Dr. Barrera, and to the rest of the board members. I will reaffirm your statements. You know, I have been given full authority to decide on the personnel that we will be hiring, or what positions we're closing, or who we are, are moving from campus to campus. That is a district administration decision, and I stand firm on that. I know that, you know, board members at times do get bombarded, especially you, Dr. Barrera. And at, at no time are we told, you know, as administration, district administration, what to do. It is simply sent right back to me, and we make the decision based on what we think will be the right thing and the best thing to do for our district. So, once again, I want to thank you to each and every one of you.
Thank you.
Now, Doc, there's, there's positions that are being requested. It's nothing new, it was already in existence, am I correct?
Yes, sir.
So we're not adding any new positions, we're not bringing in additional people because we want to, to hire people just for, for the sake of it. It's positions that are already in existence and that we need to fill.
Yeah, they'll become existing if, if approved by the board, but to answer your question, Mr. Peña has a great question. For example, most of your counselors, I'd say, I don't know, put a number to 95% of your counselors, you know, your principal are coming from the teacher pool. Obviously, we, we did remove the block scheduling in the middle school, creating overages at the middle school. So from that pool, if we do have a teacher becoming a counselor, then we look to close that position. So there's always a domino effect to save, so in essence, yes, we're asking for the position, but just like I showed that one group of, of positions to close.
Yeah.
Yes, yes. And, and I do want to also thank Ms. Garza for the initiative of, you know, bringing myself and Diana Robles, I'm sure Diana can, can echo the same thing, that as you see here, we're, if we go one cent over the midpoint, or one cent over the budget allotment that the board has given us, we're coming back to you and saying, hey, we went over, we needed it. So being very transparent about that. So the most of it, that's what this is.
Thank you.
Yes. On the next, on the next, I'm sorry.
Could I just, really quick, if there are no other questions, we'll be moving that to consent agenda. Okay? And let me read item B. Consider and take possible action on amending contract with Elfino Garza Design Group International for new child nutrition warehouse, old tractor supply. That item B will be omitted at this time. So we will move on to the next item, update on the new child nutrition warehouse, old tractor supply.
Thank you, Ms. Garza.
Yes, sir.
On this item, this item was placed on the agenda to brief the board on where we're at with the child nutrition warehouse, which is the old tractor supply. There, we've been part of a couple of Zoom calls, and we'd like to, the board to know where we're at, just, you know, I, we did verify earlier, not a single cent from 199, which is our general fund, has been spent on this project. And obviously, there's some situations that we need to iron out on the previous item that we will not move forward without ironing out with legal. But we just wanted to come forward and say, this is where we're at, this is what's going on, and just keep the board abreast of what's going on. That's the goal for today. So with that being said, I, Mr. Garza has some plans that have been created, and Mr. Cosper is the child nutrition, he's our, our consultant, because I do, the main goal here is that we have a spending plan. I guess for a lack of a better word, Ms. Robles, if I'm not mistaken, the federal government doesn't like for us to have a, a large general fund in child nutrition. They like for you to use that money. So we had a spending plan to, we're receiving large amounts of equipment, very large equipment, freezers, that type of equipment. And of course, we need to know that, that the facility could house these types of, of structures. So we're talking from, from structural to electrical, to name it. That's what we need to do before they turn it over to us and, and pay that, that, that's where this initiative is coming from. So with that being said, I, I think I can open it up to Mr. Cosper and Mr. Garza, any questions the board may have on where we're at with this project.
Yes, we, we started to work on this project several months back. We have a contract on a, on another building, not on the tractor supply, and we wrote a letter as such just to inform the board where, where we, we are with this project. But in any case, right now, they're, they're already housed in the tractor supply building, and they want to add some freezer and a cooler so they can store their food there. In addition to that, there's some racks that are being proposed for the storage of dry goods on that facility. That facility had been vacant for a while, and there was rodents that got in, and there was urine and droppings. We, we were asked to remove the sheet rock from, this facility has like three sections of the warehouse, and the front section has some sheet rock, which is a, it was a retail area of the tractor supply, and it's got sheet rock, and apparently the, the rodents got there, and we were asked to remove the sheet rock and insulation, wash the floor and the walls, power wash them, and then put new insulation and sheet rock on the front part of the building. The other, the, the back part, which is mainly the warehouse where, where food, for animal foods was being stored, there isn't sheet rock. There's only insulation on the walls, and we were, we were asked as well to remove that insulation and put new insulation. Some of those, the second part of the warehouse, it's directly behind the retail area where the tractor supply used to be, has insulation on part of the wall only. It goes up, probably halfway up on the wall. So we're going to take that insulation, which was also infiltrated by rodents and so forth. And so, remove the insulation, put new insulation up, but leave the insulation exposed. We were going to use an insulation that has a vinyl backing, so it, it's semi-finished, you know, for, for the use of the facility, that would work. We don't have to put a plywood or a sheet rock on it, but we could if you all wanted to. And then the third part of the building is kind of behind the fenced yard where they kept their, their fencing and their water troughs. There's another section of that building, the third, and, and we're calling it Warehouse One, the retail area, Warehouse Two directly behind that, and Warehouse Three to the side. And Warehouse Three has some docks where trucks can back in and deliver goods. And that section does not have any insulation at all. We were going to put insulation on that as well, and at the beginning, they had bathroom, new bathrooms, and they had new offices. But we, because of the budget, we, we removed the bathrooms, and we removed the, the, the new offices that they wanted with their, with, with the food service consent. So basically, that's where we are with that project. Right now, the, the cooler and the freezer equipment and, and all that involved was like a million, a million 38,000, something like that.
How about your services, you're part of the, of the deal? How much, what's the money, the amount?
Right now, for both parts, including the freezer, it's around 2.4 million.
That's including the freezers, which is 1 million for the freezers?
Including it, that's correct.
And you have a contract, we awarded a contract to you to work on this? Did this go out for bids, since it's such a big project?
At, at the beginning, the, the food service part of that, the bond issue was, was awarded to us. And then later on, there was a change as to what facility was going to be used. And when we finally got a contract, the contract that we have that's signed by the district is to do this work at the Payne Warehouse. And so...
Let me clarify, which is the one in, the, the one in front of Payne? Look, the one next to Payne?
Next to it, that's correct.
Okay, so then this was going to be what that place was going to take to remodel? And how could that be the same that it's going to take to do this other one, the tractor supply?
Can I, just very quickly to clarify for everyone here, Madam President did request that I did, I had read item B, and we said that we would omit that. So what they are discussing right now is we're going back to item B, so we're going to go ahead and have discussion on that right now.
Which is, consider and take possible action on amending contract with Mr. Elfino Garza for new child nutrition and warehouse, the old tractor supply. And so that's where the, the confusion comes, that you had been awarded a contract to the old place, but then now you're asking an amendment for the new.
Right.
But my question is?
If we could take that to executive, this first time issue, I would bring it up. Yeah, so I, I just saw that there was a, that there was a little problem there, and I wanted to bring it up to your attention to make sure that you all understood what's going on with this, because e- even I wasn't, you know, satisfied with the way it's going, you know?
Okay, and she had omitted this, but then I said, I think we need to be kind of, you know, explain to the people what's happening, what, we're confused, you know? And so we want to clear things up.
Yeah, now I'm confused because what they told me was that that warehouse was supposed to be a bus barn, and originally it's supposed to be the food service warehouse. So there's a lot of confusion. And that, I would say, let's, let's close discussion on it, discuss it in closed session, and take it from there.
All right. Okay, as per legal, we will continue with item B in executive session. Let's go ahead, and do we have any questions on the update of the new child nutrition program? Any other questions? Not having to do with the contract, we'll take it to executive. Okay? Thank you, Mr. Garza. Thank you, Mr. Salinas, Dr. Salinas. Item seven, board governance. Item 7A, approval of board minutes. You have those there for your review. Item one, special board meeting, April 29, 2025. Item two, regular board meeting, May 6, 2025. Item three, special board meeting, May 27, 2025. Do we have any questions on that? Okay, that will go into consent agenda. And then 7B, discussion and possible action to amend board policy, GKD Local, that will be moved to act to an action item at the regular board meeting. We will now go into item eight, executive session. 4K and 4L will be approved as, discussed in executive session. Mr. Peña, I'm sorry.
Don't worry. My fault.
And it's not approved, it's just as discussed in, in executive session. Some will be put in action items, and others will be put in consent agenda. I will discuss that with you all. Do we have any other questions? I do not think we have any items on public comments, on non-agenda items, which is item nine. I don't think we have any. And then item 10, closing business and adjournment. This ends our work session if we have no other questions. Have a great evening and thank you. Thank you, everyone.